To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the 2014 Act for the hearing. Dr. Lindsay.
Yes, you received a copy of the legal notice. Your package may have noticed that our assessed valuation increased by about $11 million. About half of that was due to new construction and improvements. And the other half was an increase in personal property. Basically what happens once you get the assessed valuation numbers, you put those into a calculation sheet for the state auditor's office and send all that information to the state auditor where they check your calculations and then they certify that the proposed rate is the accurate rate based on what your assessed valuation is. There's a pretty long formula that includes Consumer Price Index and a variety of other things and you have all those calculations in your pocket. What came out of all that though was a proposal levy for 1415 in the general fund of 1.8624 and the special revenue fund or teachers fund at 1.18. And then the debt service fund calculation came out to .3943. But as has been the practice with this district for over a decade now and in keeping with the promise that was made to the voters a long time ago, then I'm recommending a voluntary rollback of the debt service levy to 26 cents, which is what it has been from the past. When you put all those numbers together, the total levy that's being proposed is 3.3024, which is a reduction from last year's levy, which was 3.3116. This time presenting public comment regarding the proposed tax levy.
And for everyone's information, the board, our board packet a week before and we got the budget last week. So we were able to go through it and if there was any questions, we were able to call Dr. Lindsay and talk to him about it. So if we don't have questions, it's because it's pretty well answered for us.
I move to set the operating levy at $3.0424 and debt service level at 26 cents for a total levy of 3.3024 for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, before we go on any further, last month I was able to introduce our new superintendent and assistant superintendent. Tonight I'd like to introduce our head of our special services, Dr. Treese Green. With that, we'll move to the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda, the August 18, 2014 regular meeting as presented. Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next is the approval of the consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next we have public participation. Anybody would like to speak? I can move on to the reported superintendent act of the day.
I'd like to start with the enrollment for the start of school. Surprisingly a little bit, overall enrollment is up about 78 students, which reverses the trend that we've had recently. I know that those are the numbers that are available in Power School. They're not completely updated because some of the buildings are still working on transfer ends and transfer outs. But still I anticipate that once the dust settles on the enrollment numbers that we will be up some in comparison to prior years. So that's a good thing. It doesn't really affect funding for the coming year just because that currently we're being paid on the second proceeding here through the formula. So overall though, it potentially could help us down the road as far as the state and board. One area that we really took a hard look at is our kindergarten enrollment numbers, especially at St. John Elementary. Current number is 89 students, which translates out to about 22 to 23 per section. The DESI standard is 25, although the desirable standard is 17. I met with Peggy and Jerry today. We kind of talked about options, whether we want to add a section like the district did a couple of years ago. You know, when we kind of talked about that, we talked about how if we add the section, first of all, the proximity of that classroom is not very close to the other kindergarten classrooms, which we saw was kind of an issue a couple of years ago whenever we did that. Splitting current classes kind of upsets a routine that our students are already in. It takes a little while to go through the process to get a teacher in place. Chances are the teacher would be someone that did not have prior teaching experience. So all those things kind of factored in. So we talked about some other options. And you know, based on the great teachers that we do have in kindergarten, the fact that they do have experience, we're confident that they can handle that size of class. And we're going to look at additional options as far as resources, personnel, that we might be able to shift some schedules and provide a little more help in kindergarten classes. That's really the only class that raises a big concern. Second grade, I think they had 87 in St. John Elementary. Second grade also had 89, but there were three students that were possible no-shows in that class. So everything else at St. John Elementary was below 80 except for fifth grade, which was up to 85. Less the concern in fifth grade obviously, and even the DESI standards are a tighter at the upper elementary grade. Overall, it's kind of interesting that we saw that jump in the overall enrollment. Looking at past years, if that enrollment holds, and we'll really have a better feel for that when we do the September enrollment count, which is the last Wednesday of September. But if that number holds, it will be our highest number since 2010. 10-11, we had 1953, 11-12, 1909, 12-13, 1858, last year 1833 for the first year enrollment. This year we have 1919. So hopefully those numbers will hold. We really don't feel that there's any undue stress on any of those factors.
So you guys approve of all of it?
Maintenance, housekeeping, you know, basically the buildings were all ready to go for the beginning of school. Some kind of more major things that were done this summer, remove some carpeting and refinish some wood floors and some concrete and that sort of thing. Carpeting is something that we're slowly kind of trying to get away from. But did that, the parking lots here on St. John campus were all sealed, all the cracks were repaired and sealed this summer. We had some issues with all the snow and ice and everything that we had last year that kind of affected that. If you get up to Bloomsdale, to the elementary there and have a chance, go around back to the lower playground and look at the new playground surface that's in place. We did that four in place, rubber, and I thought it turned out really good. And I know Lori was pleased with it as well. So if you get a chance, of course we have some funding for that through a grant and we'll continue to kind of look at those grant opportunities as they come up for future. Kind of want to see how the durability of this holds up, that it is repairable and patchable and those kinds of things. But it looks really good. It's kind of, when you walk on it, it's real spongy. So you can tell it's meant for student safety, which is the biggest concern. Also we did some, a little bit of work in the low ag shop area and putting some welding goods and some bags there for low ag. All in all though, buildings were ready to go. One thing we do want to do next summer is see if we can get a little bit more of a schedule as far as when they're working in certain areas in the building or in buildings so that we can let our teachers know and let our administrators know so they can better schedule around. Planning to come and work in the classroom and then driving and finding out that the floor has been waxed, where you can't do that, those kinds of things. So maybe we can minimize that to a certain extent in the future and work out better for it. Teacher in service.
The teacher in service was held on Monday, August 11. It was created with some feedback I got from teachers and some administrators and submitted 2014 P professional development survey. We had three main focuses in the breakout sessions in the afternoon, well, before the morning and then the afternoon. We worked on with our staff de-escalation techniques. Tina Howe is trained in CPI, which is crisis prevention intervention maybe institute. Thank you. She is trained and is a trainer and works with our special ed teachers and a lot of elementary teachers. And the de-escalation component was one of those techniques that you can use. So we shared that with all of our teachers in all four buildings. We also had a breakout session with Officer Clark where she discussed some safety training she had taken this summer and started educating teachers on the Alice active shooter intruder drill that we will have to do at some point with our students once we have some more time to train our staff, because that is a three-hour training for our staff members too, before we can do the drill with kids. And then we also focused on data analysis and had a little bit of collaborative time at the elementaries that wasn't able to really put in middle school and high school. But all in all, everyone was in a great mood, had a great lunch, everything was good.
You also want to go ahead and talk about the annual performance report. One thing I would mention with the APR is that at this point, the final APR is not out, so they're asking us to release particular numbers because there may be corrections and that sort of thing. I think the final report is going to be published next, so Dr. Cleveland will do a little more in-depth presentation next month.
All in all, as a district, the preview shows that our APR percentage went up. We had some growth in areas that we needed to grow in. I can tell you in looking at the preliminary MAP data that across the board, across the state, I will say, MAPS works well. And Margie Van Deven, who's deputy commissioner of learning services at DESI, put out a letter, I think it was like August 7. Basically, there were 558 districts in charge who took MAP testing and 318 had an increase in English Language Arts and/or Math, but 4/3rd saw a decrease. The biggest decrease happened in third and fourth grade English Language Arts and Mathematics across the state. So what they did is they conducted a third-party review of the data to make sure it was valid and there's nothing wrong. They found the difficulty level of the test was the same, calibration and equating output were within the industry standard, so basically there were no errors in the test. So then they started looking for reasons that maybe the scores fell. So they came up with mainly three areas. First, this was the first change in testing since 2010. Budget constraints and a decline in when you change a test like this, they see this decline, but the budget constraints caused them not to be able to make the change at the state level. They also looked at conditions of the school year. With all of the snow days that we had across the state, there was a lot of loss of construction. They feel like public unrest regarding the Missouri learning standards is causing some issues and transition to the Missouri learning standards and GLEs because most school districts have gone forward with that transition whereas last year's test was geared towards GLEs, grade level expectations. And then the last thing they put in their host of reasons was that they had not changed the cut scores on English Language Arts and Mathematics since 2006. So they feel like all of this change last year caused this decline. I will tell you from the preliminary data that we saw, it does look like in most areas as a district and most of our schools, we are still above state averages. But people know more on the outside than us too. But right now, the preview, the APR is really good and I think we're pretty happy if that's really the focus.
That's all my report.
Okay, we'll move to unfinished business, the board policy action.
Yes, there were three board policies that were held out of last month's board policy update. All have to do with evaluation of staff. There are some new requirements which is back to evaluation of staff and in particular with superintendent and principal evaluations, which in our case has not been updated for many, many, many years. So these policies deal with those. And then the evaluation of professional staff policy is customized to match the network for educator effectiveness that we use with our teaching staff and have been using with our teaching staff. So unless there's any questions, I recommend that we accomplish those policies. Obviously they do come from Missouri School Board Association, they review them, really will review and make this recommendation to us.
Move to approve proposed policy changes and updates as presented.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Next, we have new business. First is the amended budget.
Yes, as Mrs. Greasinger mentioned earlier, you all received a copy of the proposed budget last week at some point. It's kind of interesting to me, of course, this is my first budget for this district, but being an old math guy, believe it or not, I enjoy messing with the numbers all the time and, you know, doing the projections and looking at those kinds of things. You know, I basically feel like the budget is kind of a balance, or should be a balance, between our fiscal responsibility to pay for our district and our goal to provide the appropriate programs and services for students. So we're not really in business to make profits and that sort of thing. It's really a balancing act between those two things, fiscal responsibility and providing the program and services that our students need. My budgeting philosophy as far as how I go about it is to basically try to hit the expenditures as close as possible, to build in some contingency funds in case there's some major issue that comes up, and then be somewhat conservative on the revenue side in case there's withholding of money or those kinds of things that are going to play. One thing that I really like about the budget document for this district that is somewhat unique, and that is the whole building section that's in there where each building talks about their accomplishments and the activities that they've had from prior to here. And I really think that that helps me stay focused on what it is that the budget is there for and to support those activities and support those accomplishments. So it's somewhat unique to have that built in the budget document, but I think it's a vital part. It's always the most interesting ingredient for the casual observer for sure. Kind of go through the budget, provide a little bit of information. You know, there are some constraints that we have based on a variety of things that we really have no control over. At this point, we've had decreasing enrollment. It really kind of kicked in a little bit for us in the formula this year. Now I hope that the enrollment numbers that I talked about before hold true because that will help us somewhere down the road. There are not large enough increases to really affect the coming year's budget in a major kind of way. We're also looking at a variety of changes in the state foundation formula. They changed the threshold on IEP students and reduced lunch and limited English proficiency students. The LEP student change didn't affect us, but the other two did affect us. And basically there's an add-on in the formula based on the numbers of students that you have in those special groups. And because they changed those threshold numbers, then the add-on is smaller for us. And that really kicked in for us this year. Of course, they continue to prorate the foundation formula. It's not fully funded at the state level and will not be fully funded this coming year as well. Currently there's withholding of state funds prior to the special legislative veto session. Basically the governors withholding funds pending the outcome of that veto override session to see what kind of tax legislation that was passed that could be vetoed, if any of that, or which of those might get overridden by the legislation. So we've got all those kinds of things in the short term. There are some changes in the state tax policy coming up down the road that will affect us as well. But you know, at this point, those kinds of things go into the projections that go into the budget document. Of course, we do want to continue our support of security upgrades. We want to continue to look at grant opportunities which require some district to match. We've experienced increased benefit cost with health insurance and that certainly affects the bottom line. Expansion of the one-to-one technology proposal so that we're now truly a K-12 one-to-one school district, which is something to be really proud of. I think it's something that we need to continue to support. And then also advancement on salary schedules are some of the expenditures that are detailed in play. On the second page, I'm just going to hit some of the high points. As I mentioned before, we've had an increase in insurance and benefit costs as well as building costs. We have, we did add a position, a special education teacher position at St. John Elementary, but we also eliminated some positions, teaching positions, St. John Elementary, administrative assistant position at district office, technology aide, and then also a part-time cook. Along with, and one that I didn't get in here, but is reflected in the budget, the elimination of a health and special education aide position as well. You can read the other pieces that are in there. Some of them I've already mentioned with the security and the one-to-one. Continued implementation of the alternative program, we think has been a huge benefit to the district and to our students, more importantly. And then also continued implementation of the new school resource officer position and support for that position. I really feel comfortable with the budget. I think that the process has been pretty extensive and I think the budget meets our goals, and that is to be fiscally responsible, but also provide those programs and services that we need for our students. Obviously it's a very flexible document. This is an amended budget, amended budget from the rollover budget that you adopted again. And of course we will review it officially in February, but it's, the way I can kind of deal with budgets, it's under constant review as we perform. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have or highlight any additional information.
Dr. Lindsay, do you know how much that governor withholding is?
I do at the state level, but we haven't really received any information that details it at the district level. I don't remember off the top of my head what the state number is, but it affects transportation, it affects the formula, affects the matching trust fund.
Those are all based on those that were passed like the last day of the session? Other questions?
I move to approve the amended budget as the budget of 2014-15 school year.
Motion in the second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the ad hoc committee review.
Can I just say one more comment? I just, Dr. Lindsay mentioned it, but I think Mr. Daniel and I have passed years of
Over 50 pages.
50 pages of things that these schools have done, so thank you very much.
Yes.
I have middle schooler and a high schooler and I've already, this list has already started for this year and I don't know who did it, but Ms. Geesler or Mr. Taylor put a video of the first day of school on the website, which is awesome, so thank you.
Yes. Watched it.
Yeah, it was great.
They gotta look fast. I think I might not watch it here.
It does always sweeten the palate.
Sorry, thank you.
No, you like you said that. Then we'll move to the ad hoc committee review for the district's working needs.
Yes, as a part of the comprehensive school improvement program review that we did back in January, I believe it was, one of the things that came out of that was to recommend the support of education that the ad hoc committee, the ad hoc committee be formed to meet facility needs. It's a fairly extensive process where we'll have a district-wide committee, but then we'll also have individual building committees. Basically we'll go through and review the facility needs that we have in each building, not only things like maintenance and roof repair and HPAC and those kinds of things, but also other things that we may need to do for the facilities for our students here. So this would start the process to form that ad hoc committee so that we can review the facilities and come to the board with recommendations about moving forward. And this ties in also with our debt service levy and would allow us to uphold the promise that we made years ago on the debt service levy and to really maximize how we spend that money without increasing taxes. That's really the process that's laid out and what you can get with it. I think that we would try to make a recommendation to the board at the December board.
So tonight we're just approving to start.
Tonight you're just approving the formation of the ad hoc committee. The committee will be made up of some of you, hopefully administrative staff, teachers, parents, and interested citizens, anyone that has an interest in serving on that committee. We'll find a place to put them to work.
I move to approve an ad hoc, excuse me, ad hoc committee to review facility needs.
Second.
A motion in the circular. And next is the research project.
Mr. Boyd Jr., your own clock.
Twenty-five minutes, right?
Twenty-five minutes.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for giving me an opportunity to make this proposal. I'm here to ask you guys for your permission to conduct a study for my dissertation. And the topic for my dissertation is an examination of the impact of positive behavior support and a positive school climate on student behavior. Basically, in a nutshell, what that means is at the high school, back around 2010-2011 school year, we began to implement some programs such as the running of the halls, such as student mentors, such as a character education program and our advisories. And what I want to take a look at is if those programs that have been implemented have had a direct correlation in decreasing the number of student discipline problems that we had. So, taking a look at ISS, OSS records and taking a look at the study, I'm going to be taking a look at those records. However, I'm not going to be looking at particular individual students, so those confidentiality issues should not come up in my particular study, so. Do you guys have any questions?
No, I thought it was a great idea.
It'll be interesting to see what the results come out. You know, the interesting thing about the study is that they've done a lot of research with these types of programs at elementary schools and at middle schools, but not a lot of research has been done in high schools. So, it'll kind of be interesting to see.
And will that be something that he can share with us?
Sure, if you guys would like to, sure.
One thing I would add to, add to that is whatever research that he does has to be approved by the institutional review board at Missouri Baptist University, which is a very...
Yes.
And they have very extensive guidelines about what kind of research, especially when it's information that pertains to the school-level children. So, he will be looking at the overall discipline aspect, but it won't be individual student information that we'll go into this time.
Move to allow Mr. John Boyd Jr. to conduct research on discipline records for his doctoral dissertation. Second.
A motion in the second. I don't think I said that. Before we go into the full session, I was telling everybody at the beginning that we give a board packet. Actually, our board packet is paperless now, and we give it on our iPads. So, if we have any questions, we can either call Dr. Lindsay or we can email. I stress that that's why we've got the iPad, we went paperless, so.
I move that the board of indication holds a closed meeting with a closed record as well as ongoing irregular open meeting on September fifteenth. Two thousand and fourteen should be held in the Art and the Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, St. Gin, Missouri, for a purpose of discussing and voting upon the following kinds of business. Legal action, causes for legal action or litigation, lease purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, dissolving, or promoting particular employees. Proceedings involving the minimal or physical health of an identifiable individual, scholastic probation, expulsion, or gratification of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof, specifications for confidential meeting to be approved or published, sealed field and related documents to the field are open, sealed proposals and related documents for law proposals are rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract for the contract is executed. Individually identifiable personnel records, performance rating, or records pertaining to employees or applicants from company, records protected from the laws of law, scientific and technological innovation to which the owner has proprietary interest, records relating to municipal outlines established under reports of abuse and wrongdoings, confidential privileged communication with the non-teacher, operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for remaining or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security systems you stretch to find with district property, a portion of a record that identifies security systems or access code, records that identify and will allow unauthorized access to or unlawful destruction of configuration of components or the operation of computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification number, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access code, or authorization code for use to protect electronic cramped actions. A further move to the notice of this meeting and the agenda to be posted required below.
Andy. A motion for the second roll call. Eric Ballmer?
Yes.
David Gobler?
Yes.
Tyler Dunsey?
Yes.
Karen DeGani?
Yes.
Martha Reesinger?
Yes.
Nick Rulo?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven oh. Move to a closed session, with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break.
A motion in the second. I don't think I said that.
All right.
Opposed? A motion.
Channel seven and ninety-eight TV and web broadcasting are made possible through contributions and donations from viewers like you. Thank you for your support.